Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is 7:30 PM on January 26, 2022. Time for our second regular meeting of January. Before we have the call to order, council members, I'd like to, if you are willing, amend the agenda to add a resolution, the one concerning the $125,000 which you got a draft for. So I need a motion, I believe, to amend the agenda. We would be adding Resolution Number R2, 2022.
I'll make a motion to amend the resolution, amend the agenda to include Resolution Number R2, 2022.
I'll second that.
Okay. Kelly, would you take a roll call, please?
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilt.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We will add that to the agenda. At this time, we will have our invocation by Kendra and our pledge led by Jim.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, thank you for all our many guests of living in a small community, knowing our neighbors, our merchants, and the ways the unwilling or un that's not the right word, the ungiving or unstopping, that's the word I'm looking for, ability to support each other. Keep our minds open tonight to new ideas. Our hearts pure with good intent and our bodies physically capable to implement your will. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in your prayers. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kendra and Jim. Roll call, please.
Chrisman.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Shilt.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from our meeting on January 12, 2022. Do you see anything that needed to be changed, added, drafted, whatever? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as they are. I'll second that.
All right. And roll call.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilt.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Do we have any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
And we have one report of a council committee. Before Jim does, I just remind everybody, in February, we'll be back to all of our committee meetings. But Jim, you want to go ahead and do the finance and personnel?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. City of Washington Courthouse Finance and Personnel Meeting held January 18, 2022. The Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers of 105 North Main Street on Monday, January 18, 2022 at 4:00 PM. Mr. Jim Blair presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Chrisman, council member, Mr. Steve Shiltz, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney, and Chelsea Baker, economic development director. First on the agenda is the committee benefited from a review of the statement of cash for the month ending in December. Then the committee benefited from a review of the investments of the City of Washington Courthouse. The administration reviewed the current natural gas aggregation pricing per cubic centimeter, CCF. The committee recommended that the discussions continue between the administration and Buckeye Energy regarding best options for the city. This committee recommended that the administration proceed with securing gas rates. The committee discussed a water utility issue with the Church of the Nazarene. The administration explained that the church had been billed an amount that reflected the use of a larger meter size than what was physically placed at the church. The administration continued and noted that the difference in the meter size caused an overage with the utility charges on the account. The committee recommended that the administration issue a reimbursement check to the Church of the Nazarene to correct the billing overage. Then the committee discussed the water billing ordinance, and the committee recommended that the water billing ordinance be reviewed by the committee in the future. The administration advised the committee that a change had been completed with the distribution of credit cards, plural, and bill processing. The committee then noted that due to staffing issues within the water department, some areas of the water department processing had been slower than normal. Mr. Denon noted that staffing had been rearranged between departments to accommodate the issue. The committee noted that interviews continued for the replacement of the position of Director of Finance. The committee discussed in length the operations of the golf course. The administration noted the desire to operate the golf course from a group of citizens along with the Community Improvement Corporation. The committee recommended that permission be granted to the administration for financial support to the Community Improvement Corporation in the amount not to exceed $125,000. The committee benefited from a report of personnel matters given by Mr. Denon. The committee noted that interviews were being conducted for the water plant. The administration advised the committee that staffing had been an issue recently due to the cold virus, but duties were being maintained. I'm sorry, COVID virus. And finally, the committee noted that the human resource department is preparing a job description for the position of income tax administrator. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Jim Blair, Chairperson, Finance and Personnel, Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Are there any questions about that report?
I just wondered if there's any progress we made on hiring an auditor.
Finance Director.
Finance, I'm sorry, Finance.
Kendra, you want to give a little report here about that?
We've interviewed three individuals. We're interviewing a fourth individual on Friday. Tomorrow, we are going over and we asked for Terry to follow up with the three individuals we already interviewed with follow-up questions, concerns that we had, or just clarification needed. He did that, and we're to discuss that tomorrow, and then that final interview will be Friday. And then unless we have follow-up questions for that individual, I would say we're going to be making a decision here soon.
Steve, you got anything you want to add?
Well, I just that we have, like I said, three, I think there's three very well-qualified individuals. So it's going to be a difficult task to decide which one to go with. But then there will be some final interviews. I mean, will we have Kendra? The rest of the city council will be involved eventually.
I don't know what, we haven't discussed that.
Yeah, we'll have to just decide how we're going to do that for the final interview, yes. But we do have three very good qualified individuals. So actually, four, but three we know of, so.
Does that answer it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Do we have a motion to accept that report?
I'll make a motion that we accept the Finance and Personnel Meeting held January 18. Accept it as read.
All right, roll call.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilt.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. All right, Mr. City Manager, your report.
Thank you. The weather has been notable of late. We have used about 700 tons of salt, which for this time in the year is quite a bit. Ironically, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference if there's a large snow or a small snow of how much salt that we use. The small snows can eat it up. I mean, if you have a quarter inch or four inches, it really doesn't affect that a whole lot. And we have used with street nearly 100 hours of overtime. They have been out there, they have been working, and they have done a very good job. They have worked very hard to make it so that any place that we want to go from A to B, we can do that. Now, in some streets, smaller side streets, is it advisable to slow down a little bit? Yes. But you can get from point A to point B, and those folks at the street department have worked enormously hard for that. Natural gas, again, we're not talking about this winter. We're talking about a little bit further on down the road. From April 1, 2022 through March 31, 2023, fixed rate, when you convert it, I believe that'd be 54.8 cents on a customer's bill. And then from April 1, 2023 through October of 2024, a fixed rate of 47.4 cents. We're very happy with that, and we're very happy to provide that service. And I also put in your box the certification process that we go through. You go through one for gas and electric every two years. I think I put the electric one in your box, if I remember correctly. The main break on Oakland Avenue at the rail crossing, I want to especially thank the water distribution crew. In weather this cold, being in a hole and wet is particularly unpleasant. And they've had a couple of main breaks lately. That one at the rail crossing next to the railroad was particularly difficult, and you had the added complication of it being next to the railroad. And you had the time issue of when a train was scheduled to come through, and they did an excellent job last night. They were out in the middle of the night. And you can imagine if you were out at 1:00 in the morning, covered in water, there were some cold folks. Fire police meter reading street, despite the weather, have all performed their jobs exceptionally well. Cold weather, ice and snow, and working outside makes many of their jobs particularly unpleasant. And, you know, when folks, when you see that they have the street blocked off and they're dealing with a main break, you know, if you could slow down a little bit and pay attention to the barricades and cones, that would be very helpful. COVID staffing is getting better, but we've had to rearrange a number of folks and people to keep everything ticking along, but we have managed to do that. And numerous people have done exceptional with that, and I'm incredibly pleased and proud of them. Little reminder, it's not a city thing, but you would have got your property tax bills, and you need to remember to pay those. Now, the majority of that money goes to the schools, and the county, a very small amount, goes to the city. But don't forget to pay those because it's an easy thing to set aside and forget about. But you've got those bills, and you need to get those taken care of. That's all everything I have for tonight.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Denon?
Yeah, how does our new rate compare to what we had? I guess I know what that is, but I didn't look.
Property tax rate?
No, the new rate for the electric.
That's a bit, a little bit higher, Ted, on the electric. I'm sorry, on the natural gas. That pricing is about natural gas. Electric hasn't changed, and we don't have to deal with that till a little bit further on down the road. But again, this winter, the winter we're in now, nothing has changed at all. This is for a little bit further on down the future, and it goes up a little bit.
But we're still below the DTML rate?
Oh, heavens, yeah. The standard customer officer tremendously.
Other questions for Mr. Denon? Okay, you've heard where we stand with our Director of Finance. So, Mr. Pitstick, do you have a report?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Nobody's mowing grass these days?
Not right now, not right now. Hopefully soon.
We don't seem to have any local residents in taxpayers, so we'll move to legislation previously introduced. That will be Resolution Number R1, 2022, second reading.
I'll move that we put the Resolution R1, 2022, on second reading.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilt.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution Number R1, G8, 2022. One nation authorizing this state's management of the City of Washington Courthouse. To ensure an agreement of the state county in the confinement of prisoners.
Who's our option?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call.
Chrisman.
Yes.
Hawke.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Shilt.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, we'll now move to new legislation since we amended the agenda. And it will be Resolution Number R2, 2022, first reading.
I'll make a motion to replace Resolution Number R2, 2022, on first reading. Second.
Discussion?
I just, I'm concerned that we're voting on this tonight because I felt like we needed another conversation in committee because I felt like I had unanswered questions, and I don't think things were clear. And I don't know, I'm just, I'll be honest. I feel like this was forced through tonight. It was marked as a draft in my folder, and now we're voting on it. And it's a resolution which is two votes. And it just doesn't feel right to me because I don't think that anybody here could answer all the questions the other night. So I will be abstaining from the vote today. Because of that, I don't, I'm just not comfortable with it. I want questions answered before I I am 100% behind getting this golf course running. But I don't want to bandage it. I don't want to just quick-fix it. And we're in the same place we are right now today in two or three years, and my questions aren't answered. So as a member of this council representing the people who vote for me, I'm abstaining tonight because I do not feel comfortable voting yes or no.
Mr. Dan, did you tell us that this just means that we are going to, once there were appropriate, if something goes south, then it's?
You're authorizing the transfer. But simply because you've authorized the transfer doesn't necessarily mean that we immediately go out and write a check if you folks want to think about it and if you have questions that you need to ask.
That was my understanding.
Well, once, but once it's passed, it's passed. What, am I going to come back to council and go, oh, Joe, don't write the check? I mean, once it's passed, it's a done deal. So I just feel like it was thrown at me very quickly tonight. I mean, I specifically looked at this and said, it says draft. I reviewed it, and that's all I did. I did not research or do any more because I thought I had time. So I don't like that.
What are some of the outstanding questions?
There are questions that I don't think we should ask.
Okay.
Here. In my opinion, for me personally.
So some of those, some, I guess, not, not those, but acknowledging that those exist. The questions I have, just having looked over this, in the whereas sections, it does talk about profiting and maintaining the golf course. And I do see it says other economic development and recreational purposes. In Section 1, it talks about finding the golf course and other economic endeavors. I don't necessarily see recreational purposes on there. The wherethes are not really as effective as the main portion where it says Section 1 and 2. I guess as a technical point, I would like to see some symmetry in the language. But with that language particularly, what is the money potentially otherwise going for if it's not for the golf course?
The committee had a discussion that they did not want to constrain the CIC's activities. It's been extremely successful in the past several years with small business loans in particular. And city and county had discussed that you did not want to constrain that originally. The county had proposed funding at the $100,000 level. The committee discussed that we make that 125 so that CIC doesn't feel constrained at all in its normal activities that it has been successful with for the past several years.
And the, this is going to the CIC. The CIC oversees that one joint economic development committee that the council created with the county, whatever transferred the land into the, into that.
Parks and Recreation.
Yes.
Parks and Recreation, yes. I just want to make sure everybody knows the county is also putting in 125,000.
The last time we put in 125 was, how many? Because we've done this before, right? 125?
You transfer funds to CIC for the purpose of the golf course before. And Mark, do you recall when that occurred?
Well, it's been four years ago.
Four. That's, okay.
Four years ago, I think it was 150,000.
And there were, there was, I, every single time I think about the golf course, I guess, my question always goes back to it's in this special Parks District place, and it's there because they're supposed to get these special grants. I have yet to see that. And now, I have no problem supporting the parks. I think everyone knows that. But now, we're dishing out 125,000 dollars, and I haven't seen any action in the group who oversees this.
The group would be turning it over to the CIC?
They are turning it over with this? That's part of this?
The plan.
Okay.
It's in the works.
The golf course, I'm talking about, not all parks.
Okay. The golf course, they will be turning it over.
It is in the works right now.
It is.
There is a conversation going on.
Is that part of this language?
No.
I don't, I don't think it's part of this language, no. Not part of this draft.
Probably should be, is a contingency. What happens if this Parks and Recreation decide they don't want to do it? I understand there's a little bit of pushback from the Parks and Rec. I mean, that's, if it's, if their part's done and we're the only ones that's holding it up, I could, I could see where that would answer. I mean, Mike, well, I think there's so many moving parts that have not been, have come together. I mean, sure, we can do our part, but like has already been mentioned, once we commit this money, then it could go, as Mr. Johnson talked about, the language is not in here. It could go to whatever the CIC would want to use it for.
I personally, it sounds like there are some questions. And if other councilors have questions, I would have no problem just tabling this, and then we can keep looking at it. And then if we need to, you know, amend it another day, I would have no problem with it. It would be up to you.
Well, first of all, I think I asked everybody pretty clearly, do you want to amend the agenda to add this? The vote was seven to zero.
But Dale, I didn't have any time to even think about it. I've been, why did I mess up on my prayer? Because I'm still, I'm trying to process it. It was very quickly put on top of me personally. I walked in here thinking it was a draft. Then I thought, well, I'll go ahead and let it be put on the agenda. But I need to think about it. And then the longer I thought in this meeting, I'm thinking I'm not going to vote. I mean, I don't make a quick decision like that. So in fairness, it was the first thing that came out of, on the table tonight. No time to think about it.
If you're going to amend the agenda, it has to be first.
I understand that, but you can't criticize my opinion when I've had, what, a whole whopping 10 minutes, 15 minutes to think about it and trying to also concentrate on what's going on? I mean.
I'm not criticizing. I'm just saying, we voted to amend the agenda. I'm not criticizing. If you have questions about it, okay.
So perhaps procedurally, we could answer that. I believe amending the agenda would only mean to include it there, but it would not prohibit us at all from then putting a subsequent motion to just table it while it's on the amendment agenda.
Procedurally, it wouldn't preclude you from doing that.
Is that what you were worried about, Mr. Chairman?
I'm not.
Proceed with it, or?
No, if you, if the council wants to table it or vote it down or whatever, obviously, that's your choice.
Could I, can I interject here?
Sure.
I mean, one of the reasons we're trying to do this with some expedience is that the season is almost on us. I do feel like if it's in the hands of the CIC, that maybe we'll make, maybe we, I shouldn't say it out loud, but maybe we'll make better progress on what our goal is for that golf course. And, you know, we have discussed it, what we're going to do and what we're going to put in the draft, so I'm in favor moving forward. I'm not saying Ken's wrong or Ray's wrong, I just.
And you're absolutely right, Ted. There's things we have to do, maybe quickly because of the group that's taking over the golf course or wants to run the golf course. There's certain things they have to pay for right away. Golf carts, for one thing, and a few other things that they need.
We have until Fe, the mid-February to buy the golf carts. I've researched this.
They have to mid-February, yes, that's true. That's what I said.
Hey, let me ask you this, Ted. So if you're going to spend $125,000 of your money, would you make it over one discussion? Because that's all I've had, is one discussion with you guys.
Well, I probably wouldn't put any money into golf myself. But I know that we're talking about the general consensus in the town and the people that would like to see it move forward. And I just have.
I'll miss this for a little bit of time.
Mr. Pitstick, correct me if I'm wrong, but did we have a special meeting just for this subject? 18th of this month, the day after MLK?
I believe we had it on Tuesday, it was last week.
Yeah. On the 18th, I think, but MLK was on 17.
I believe that's correct.
And all that stuff was addressed then.
I had questions and I left with questions and I have left questions for everyone in here. So, I don't agree with that.
You don't agree at what you had?
That, the discussion was complete. We had the discussion.
I'm waiting for somebody on council to make a motion.
We have a motion in the second for first reading.
But if somebody wants to table, I think they can at this point.
What? Don't worry, we booked it. Are we in discussion right now? Didn't we already move in second?
Yes, we did. I'm sorry, we did. But we're in discussion.
So, we have to either pass it and then amend it if we want to?
No, you can pass it or you can table it or you can vote it down. I think you have three choices.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table the ordinance or the resolution.
Now, Mr. Pitstick, are we correct here? Okay. So, Kendra makes a motion to table. Do we have a second?
Could I ask, Mr. Pitstick, what exactly does that entail if it's tabled? Does somebody have to set up a meeting to discuss?
No, no, sir.
Okay, so where's the, where's the leave at that if it's tabled?
You can bring it off the table at the next meeting. If you decide you want to have a special meeting, you can do that and, uh, bring it off the table, but it's up to you to decide if and when you want to bring it off the table. I've seen these things lay on the table and die forever. So, it's up to you to decide how you want to handle that.
It has to be brought up to be off the table though at a regular meeting.
Yes, sir.
Or a special meeting.
But it can be the same meeting that you'd start the first vote.
That's, that's correct.
Could be this meeting. Somebody could say, okay, let's table, but let's have a new special meeting next week on Thursday.
Well, you, you could do it that way if you wanted to, but I, I don't know what council wants to do. You have the full range to do whatever it is you would like to do.
I'll back in a motion.
Okay, there's a motion to table with a motion and a second. We need a vote to table. Would you roll call, please?
Chrisman?
No.
Hawke?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
No.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
No. So, I think that was four to three. Okay, our next job then is to vote on the motion that was made by Jim Chrisman and Ted seconded. Uh, this is Resolution Number R two twenty twenty-two, first reading. Roll call.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Abstain.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Okay.
Resolution Number R two dash two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution authorizing Joseph Jay Bennett, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, or his designee to transfer one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to the Community Improvement Corporation of Washington Courthouse of Jay County for the purpose of recreation and economic development.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's no other legislation. We have miscellaneous. Mr. Hawke, what do you got?
Good, Mr. Chairman, could I go back to this again, since I'm fairly due with this? This is a draft.
No.
Not now.
You decided for it.
So, the wording stays the same, exactly. Everything's the same.
Okay, there is another vote. Okay, now, miscellaneous, Mr. Hawke.
I like everybody here. But, you can answer yourself. I, I appreciate all the hard work that's been done for, um, to get a finance director. And I think you've studied three people, pretty much, and they're still interviewing them, I guess. And there's been three other names brought forward. And, uh, I'm behind any move to go ahead and expedite this, even if we have to get people other than the original applicants. So, I, I would like to see us move forward because I, um, I just think we're in a dangerous situation right now legally. Not that it's illegal not to have a finance director, but we could make some missteps. We, we just kind of need to get everything settled in the workplace in this building. And, uh, there's some conflict and there's, just, I, I just think we need to get some moves, so... And I know it's easy for me to say, say, you guys want to do, but I, I, I would be behind trying to get some movement here, so... And I'm saying that as slow as I can. Because I'm, I'm, I'm slaving the bone here, so...
Yeah. Anything else? Mr. Chrisman?
I will kind of echo Mr. Dennen on, our people have to work outside. It's not pleasant weather and they all do a good job. In fact, as far as I know, all city employees have done a good job, so, uh, I'd aim on that a little bit, including administration. That's about all I have. Thank you. And watch out and slip in the ice.
Mr. Johnson?
Um, I think that, uh, you said seven hundred, uh...
Tons?
Tons? That's impressive.
That's impressive.
So, yeah, good job to the, uh, street partners for doing that. It's good to hear that they're still doing all right and that, even though they're, uh, pulling in the overtime, so that's good to know. Lastly, I hope things do go better for the, uh, the golf course in the future. I know it's extremely vital for this community. And, uh, that area is particularly important to recreation in Washington Courthouse. So, thank you.
Mr. Blair?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, seems kind of out of place right now to be talking about this, but you know, good weather's coming. And we've got some exciting recreational opportunities going to be available to our community this year. Going to have the pickleball course at Iman Park. Going to have, everything's official markings, the nets and everything, so that'll be a plus. Disc golf, uh, is also hopefully progressing right along behind the cemetery. And then, of course, as Mr. Johnson's alluded to, the golf course under new management. I did have a really good conversation, uh, with, uh, Mr. Jason Mongold, who's one of the proposed, uh, members of the LLC that's going to be running it, and they have a great vision and a great program in place. I just hope that everything comes together, all the parties can get everything done and we won't be, uh, second guessing our decision tonight. Also, where I think we're looking at a splash pad expansion sometime this year. And, uh, I think these are all things that, uh, are positive things for the community. And, uh, I just thought of this, my wife kind of mentioned this when we went through town. See where they took the lights down on the bridge for the Christmas? She said, well, why don't they put up red lights for Valentine's Day on the bridge? Spoken like a, a true lady, you know, and I thought, I'll just throw that out here. Maybe we could change that as the seasons change. And I do have a quote, uh, Mr. Chairman, from Mr. Paul Bear Bryant, anybody that knows anything at all about Alabama and football. And he says, "It's not the will to win that matters." Everyone has that. "It's the will to prepare to win that really matters." That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Ms. Hernandez?
I have nothing.
Mr. Schultz? Well, I want to agree with Mr. Blair about the, all the exciting things that's coming up at Washington Courthouse this year. I look forward to it. The, uh, the work, maybe we could fit in over to park, the, uh, golf course, which is, all these things are things that are, uh, builds Washington Courthouse, gives us a look, gives us a feel, gives us a destination. So, these kind of things we have to continue working with. And the discussions we have on all these things, that is fine. We need discussions to work out all the details. So, as we move forward this year, I think it could be a very positive thing for the City of Washington Courthouse if we all kind of keep moving forward with Washington Courthouse along with the discussions and I think things will be fine. So, I look forward to this year and working with everybody and I'm telling you, Joe, you're right about the crew out there in this cold weather. I was out there the other night and I saw them digging there along the railroad tracks. I thought, oh my God, there's four guys. And they was out there like all day and I think half the night. So, I know what it's like. So, it's very cold out there. So, everybody stay safe, watch where you walk on the ice, nobody fall down. So, everybody stay safe and healthy. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The only thing I have is last meeting. I ask all of you to think about, uh, when we could have a planning session. And so, I would like to do that as we get into a new month. I still want to have a planning session and we're really planning not, obviously, this month or next month, we're planning for the future. So, uh, when would you like to do that, I guess, is my question tonight? When would you like to have a planning session? And I, when I say planning session, I mean setting some goals. We do it for individuals like Mr. Dennen, Mr. Pitstick and so on, but I'm talking about for the community. You were talking about things in recreation, but there's other areas too. So, uh, when would you like to do that?
I think you could set a time and just let us know what you think and give us a couple of choices.
Okay, um, Ted, you have something?
I think, in my mind, it would be appropriate to have a, a session where we discuss all kinds of points and what we want to do and then come back again and put it all, and try to get something condensed down to what we want to do. Because it is, if it's a five-year plan, I wouldn't want to do it in one meeting.
Sure. I think that's, that's a good plan, dude. So, okay, I'll look at some dates and get back or have Kelly get back with you.
Yeah.
And we'll do that here very shortly. And the only other thing I've mentioned is, I, I do remember that Ms. Hernandez had some questions about the golf course. I do think that all those questions actually are being worked on, uh, but it's a process of having to find out legal issues. For instance, uh, about liquor license. There's other issues, uh, that are out there that we're trying to work out with the Parks and Recreation Board. I think that will be worked out. And so, uh, those things are being worked on and I think will be, come to conclusion here very shortly. So, anyway, uh, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Well, take your pick, Kelly.
Oh, somebody else has, sorry. Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Thank you very much. We're adjourned.